It's Tuesday, September the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four. It's nine oh four A.M. We're gonna open up with a prayer. I'm gonna ask Brother Danny to say prayer.
Father, we first of all, we come with a heart of thanksgiving this morning, Lord God. You said that everything have breath, praise he the Lord. And we come and say thank you, Jesus, for the gift of life, Lord. I want to thank you, Lord God, for the gift of salvation, Lord, for God so loved the world that he sent his only God's son. And Lord, I want to thank you today, Lord, for the gift of life and the gift of salvation. And today, Lord, I ask you, lead us and guide us, Lord, the decisions that we make today. Lord, you said we inquire of you, Lord God, you direct our path. And today, Lord, we looking unto the heavens. And we thank you once again for the blessings upon Newton County and upon all the people in this courtroom. In the name of Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
You know, thinking about that prayer, it is so encouraging to go to football games and everyone, no matter where they're at, start off with prayer and get their pen dropped, no matter where you're at. It hasn't always been that way.
So, all right, be there and do the Lord's prayer for each game. We'll call the meeting in order. Uh, we do have a court. I'd like to acknowledge the guests that are here. Uh, do we have anybody signed up for the vote? Thinking? So, we're not closing up.
No.
Thinking, closing that, uh, we'll go right in and deliberate and consider action on the following items. Item number one is discuss and approve compromise settlement and release agreement between Newton County and RJ Services regarding county salvage, uh, county equipment currently located at RJ Services. All right, I'm over there.
Rich. Sorry, I don't know. Okay, this is concerning some salvage equipment that, uh, placed at, uh, Richard RJ, uh, Services back, uh, before I, uh, was elected. Uh, it's been approximately twenty to twenty-five years, uh, that this equipment was, uh, placed there. And, uh, we were, the county, Thomas, the, the commissioner before, they were, uh, were using RJ Services to repair equipment. And so, uh, they, uh, for several years, they, they were the sole, uh, repair shop for, for that precinct, for precinct two. And, uh, one of the, the old motivators were wrecked and it was the old G twelve motivator. And, uh, it was a major wreck that was involved with, uh, on, uh, eighty-seven. Uh, and, uh, they chose at that time to keep that for spare equipment and nothing was ever done to it. And so it was, uh, to make repairs to the one that was still in service. And, uh, and so they had a front end loader, a, a, uh, I believe it was a, a nineteen, uh, nineteen eighty-four, a front end loader. And, uh, they, the engine went out in it and, uh, they searched for a couple of years all over the internet, all over the world, so to speak, to try and find an engine to replace that with. And they never did. And I think, uh, as the, uh, as the, the, uh, went, went on down the line, the things stayed there and they never did make an agreement. Well, uh, we talked with, uh, the previous commissioner and he said that he really didn't, uh, remember how long, exactly how long it had been there, but he remember RJ, uh, telling him that, uh, that he had a couple of other places that he was waiting on for response and that kind of thing. So the time just kept going on and, and, uh, this equipment just stayed there and that was in that place. And as I came on, I, you know, I'm looking forward and wasn't looking back and then we had no, uh, it wasn't on any priority list or anything. So I didn't put a lot of emphasis on it. He did mention to me a couple of times that he had it. And, uh, I told him that we would, uh, try and figure out what to, where to go from there. And so, uh, come, uh, July last year, he bought a invoice over there for rental fee, uh, in the amount of ten thousand dollars. And that was far more than what this, this, uh, salvage equipment would work. And so I, uh, discussed it back and forth. And that's what I, uh, said with, with the previous commissioner and, uh, talked about to make sure that they didn't have some kind of agreement. He said definitely did not have a written agreement and he couldn't recall any verbal agreement as far as rent. He never, uh, rent was never an issue. And so, storage fee, I'm sorry, uh, storage fee was never an issue. So it was never discussed in that, in that, uh, term. And so, uh, as we talked with RJ about what he was expecting and what he was charging for and that kind of thing, where we, we, uh, couldn't come up with a solution at the time. So I got my, uh, DA, DA's office involved because, uh, as we did some research on our own, there are certain qualifications and that you have to have, you charge, uh, storage and that kind of thing. So as we, I talked back to communicate it, all of us communicated back and forth, but we came to the agreement that, uh, because what he was asking for was far more than what it was worth. So it would be, uh, to our benefit as Florida county and, uh, uh, to, to try and come up with some type of compromise. And so I'll turn it over to Misty, uh, and let her explain that.
Commissioner White, it's agreeable to RJ Services, uh, in exchange for the salvage equipment that he will forgive the invoice. Now, uh, ultimately what we did was this, this is considered salvage equipment under the, uh, what was the government code? I can't remember. But anyway, um, we did follow that code. We offered a per se, we got no bids. And when you offer a salvage equipment per se, only get no bids, then you can dispose of it at your discretion. Um, so that's what we're considering this at this time, is disposing of it at your discretion, uh, in exchange for the forgiveness for the invoice. Uh, it's my recommendation that you, uh, approve the agreement, uh, given all the circumstances and the whole effects surrounding it. I think, uh, the Commissioner White, I think, recommended this all. You know, probably.
Uh, and, uh, we, we, should we also, uh, uh, DA's office has, has, uh, has, uh, written a, a, a settlement more or less so that, uh, this won't, this will away, it won't be,
It's a commission.
Right. It won't be a whole more issue. So we.
So once we're approved, we give it to Mr. White. And, and Lewis, the invoice?
You know, back before, I guess after the March primary, I was at RJ Services and he took me out and showed me what you're talking about. And he basically described everything he just said to a T, you know, and said it, you know, I can't do anything with it. It's taking a phase. County needs to do something, you know, and so the story I heard two years ago, two years and six months is what you just described.
Yes. So I guess we need a motion to approve the compromise settlement and release agreement?
I'll make the motion if we approve the compromise settlement based on our SISF County Attorney's recommendations and the discussion has been held today.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell. The, say goodbye, Commissioner Benson, all in favor?
Uh.
All against.
General.
All right, item number two, uh, considering an, an if appropriate approved budget amendment to authorize funds to be moved from the records preservation budget to the county clerk's payroll to purchase comp hours for two employees over chart. Miss, let's take it.
Yeah, sir. Um, I've requested, I've been talking with Sherry and her office, our auditor, about how we need to do this. Kristi and Ginger, that was my office as well. Because we had four elections this year, uh, I've got two roles that are maxed out and over the allowable cost from them. So we agree that it would be best if I tried to buy that comp time. So I am asking for approval and move our records preservation, which is dedicated uh, to the payroll to actually cover the cost. And it, it comes out to about five thousand eight hundred thirty dollars in difference.
Actually, you have a records.
I'm not sure. I mean, it, it's a large amount. We just kind of.
Hundred and sixty thousand. So.
And that's money that's generally, like, every time we report it off, maybe so it regenerates itself.
So just a question, why wouldn't you buy all of the comp time in your office? When we do this today, why wouldn't you just say, I'm paying out all the comp time? Be done with it.
Um, like, I show the old one. She wants to save some of hers. She's running down the asset, you know, because she has kids that they're sick and she doesn't have enough sick time. You know, they want to hang on to some of it. Um, now, Angel Carter, um, requesting to buy two hundred hours of her. So that, that would be the bulk of hers. And then this coming year, I don't know, one election total. And the problem with getting comp time is they have so much vacation. So it's hard to get the vacation in and all this comp time. So it's just kind of cumulative.
Well, my deal with comp time is if you've got enough, you've got enough flexibility in your office to give somebody comp time, you've got too many people in your office. So I don't, I don't like comp time. Not, not to say that it don't work for some. I get it. I got one guy that don't want nothing but comp time and likes it and it works good because he has no vacation. But and just, I'm gonna just, for me personally, if all the money in that records retention, if you could pay all your comp time, I'm a hundred percent in favor of that because it can be used for nothing else other than payroll, correct? I'll make the motion to support the request to make the amendment that has been proposed by the county clerk to pay out comp time.
All right, motion made by Commissioner Powell.
I'll second that.
Say goodbye, Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against. Okay, item number three, discuss and take actions concerning initial communication with governance, controls, E. Reed and associates. And then that's Sh- uh, Sharon, but she's not here. But, uh, you did say we do have the twenty twenty-three engagement letter?
Yes, that's what she said, that, that, I think, she just, obviously, letter, but what she wanted to do about. Uh, this, uh, this letter, yeah, nothing against it, but, well, it's, uh, it's, that question was about.
Important that gets it going on the twenty-three audit, right?
I didn't get it going on the other one.
You know.
Yeah.
Gets an authority to start. That who does?
He was going to move right into the twenty-three, it's not working on any of the counties until February. We're not only on it, I still feel the same. And initially to move right.
Well, they've received an email from ex-farmer agriculture firm this time in about, uh, the length of twenty twenty-three audit. So it's due in September, but we hadn't filed the paperwork on it yet. So this, you're the, you're the point person. What, what are we looking like on the timeline? And I, I know there's scary words, you know, when you ask an auditor for that, but do you have anything?
I can kind of throw our answer out and then he's going to be fully dedicated and be at the county until February, other than taking a few days off of holidays. That's all this is working on, this county setup. And what everything that he needed, he accepted it, uh, last February. And what already had is what he had, moving forward and, and the finisher, and, and right for twenty-three. So that's all, that's all my answer for the time, is that he, if nothing else, until February, he's dedicated, where this is taking, until February.
Good. And, you know, the last commute, last word that I heard was he had asked for sixty test city voices where he could look over the invoices. So that pretty well means he's finished with audit, did these, did these tests and his work.
For twenty-three or twenty-two?
Twenty-two.
Oh, okay.
So he asked for sixty invoices, random invoices, so he could go back and.
So. Well, it sounds like a little bit I know about it, not using Joel's Reed at this point would put his way back because we would have to find someone and initiate a whole, that's what I was told to, you know, so.
He told me he used to take more clients and then he had smaller clients as far as I think county. And then he narrowed it down to all six. And then started to make sure he's only gonna have two, Newington County and Love County. So he's kind of tailoring down his, his practice, I guess, and he wants to help New County, loves it here. He loves helping, he's done it for so long. It would cost us three or four times as much to have an audit done. So I think he, I think he does a good job and he understands that he's the bad guy and he's throwing the best script and that and all of it. He's just gonna be, he's, he's, he did it, so.
So the line items is discuss and take sha- take action concerning initial communication. So is that the engagement letter? Is that what that means? I mean, I'm kind of lost on what we're doing there.
The only thing I got in the email that said to me was that this needed to be discussed in court. We did not have to read it to you, but this letter, which is not an engagement letter.
So, so let me ask this, can we just table this and ask Misty to go over that letter and maybe are we going through the agenda and then?
No, we're, we're sharing here. Do you have to put it on? From sharing.
But Sherry did type that letter up.
The, the letter that you Charles read. So if we could just, it makes it good. Yeah, let it do the end and go forward. Okay. All right. We'll take it and like, like we just said, move this to the end, uh, moving on to item number four. Uh, item number four is discuss and take action to real- reallocate remaining ARPA funds. If, well, we have some ARPA funds that were not used, that were allocated and it, it all had to be allocated or spent. But it had to be allocated, uh, in the December, or we got to pay it back. So and I'm not sure which one of these figures that they come up with is how much ARPA money we have left. But they seem, they're saying we need to allocate the remaining ARPA funds to payroll. That way they can go back and show that it's, it's already been spent. And then money that's there, so we could use this for, rather than. But if the dedicated ARPA money we allocated to payroll, we can show the receipts where it's already been spent. According to the auditor's office.
Mr. Mark, there's one, any questions?
Hey, Mark, can you explain that to us?
Yes, sir, Judge. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Um, I think Courtney had provided you with the sheet that I had provided to her earlier this morning. Um, and what we have on that sheet, that lists all the requests that have, that have been through Commissioners Court and the financial status of each of those quit, request. If y'all will recall, many of those were a not to exceed request. So if you look in the payroll column and the bill pays, there are balances left there. There again, we have gone through all of those invoices. Some of those in conjunction with the auditor's office, we have determined they were not eligible for reimbursement through the ARPA grant. In other cases, they just not, did not need to access the full funds that had been requested. Uh, if you look farther down, the items that are in yellow on that sheet, those are items, uh, for the, the first three on there are items the funds were allocated, but none of those funds have been expended as of to date. And then the fourth one on there, the two hundred thousand dollars for solid waste, one hundred and twenty-one thousand of that has been transferred to solid waste. We do have documentation for the full two hundred thousand if we include solid waste payroll. We don't know if it's, if it's the intent of the auditor to transfer that remaining seventy-nine thousand to solid waste or utilize that for payroll. If those seventy-nine thousand dollars is not transferred, if you will look farther down, what's currently out there is two hundred forty-seven thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. Uh, if they do allocate the remaining seventy-nine thousand, then you would have one hundred sixty-eight thousand, one hundred sixty-nine dollars and sixty-one cents. What we would ask that the court do is consider obligating any remaining balance of ARPA funds for payroll. That way, no matter whether we move the seventy-nine thousand or not, we're clear to allocate whatever is left in that ARPA account to payroll. And all of it will either be obligated or expended by December the thirty-first of this year.
Okay. Well, thank you, Mark. So. Anybody have any questions on?
By that, we all do what Brother Mark did to myself. I make that motion.
All right.
Allocate all the remaining funds payroll.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Benson.
Okay.
Say goodbye, Commissioner White, all in favor?
Uh.
All against. All right.
Yes, so that's just for the viewing audience in future months and years to come, the, we're moving this money into payroll. And this money has to be used, you know, but that doesn't mean that the money that's been freed up can't be used for something other than that, right?
Yes.
That's what I mean. But I mean, I, you know, for the general public that may say, well, you used all the money, all the ARPA money for payroll, uh, that's true, the ARPA money was used in payroll, but by using that ARPA money in payroll, it freed up the same amount of money in the general fund to be used for any purchase. Yes, that's just what I wanted to make.
Right, so we need documentation showing that we spent the full amount of ARPA funds to, I had to re- return it back to the state or the government. So item number five, uh, discuss and approve closeout documents for PDA, uh, CDV grant number C D V twenty-one day zero one zero one, including L J A certificate, change order number two, and final change order, contractors payment and affidavit, and certificate of construction completion, certificate, certificate of acceptance paper request for, and final retaining as, as bill drawn. And that's Morgan again in. I think we're going to have to table this. So, yeah, I might as well, many in grief, I know. I don't know. She's been working on the closeout documents on this grant and.
What grant is that? Just curious.
It's a, 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 the reward.
Yes.
What, what's that?
He's, he's new water. Oh, that's Mark. Yeah. Are you still there, Mark?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Uh, Judge, these, these closeout documents, these are the customary closeout documents for a TDA grant. Uh, this is the, the project that the application was submitted several years ago, got funded roughly two years ago at this point in time, and it's for the water lines, uh, north of the city of Newton itself. Uh, if I'm, if I'm not mistaken, it's, it is in Commissioner White's precinct. He might can address the specific area. It is in Commissioner White's precinct. He might can address the specific area a little bit better than I can. But the actual funding for this project was three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of grant funds. To be combined with seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars of local match. The project did come in under budget. Even in consideration of the two change orders, the actual construction is going to be two hundred and fourteen thousand, sixteen dollars and eighty cents. Uh, that combined with the engineering fee and admin fee. Makes a co- total project cost of three hundred four thousand, two hundred sixty-six dollars and eighty cents.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you, Mark. And that's that's the one that, uh, county paid for. Uh, as we don't have the audit, so we couldn't request. The refunds from Department of Culture.
That is correct, Judge. And at this point in time, they are requesting that the twenty-twenty-two and twenty-three audit to release those funds.
Yes. But that will release the funds in twenty-five if we have the audit, correct?
That is my understanding. Yes, sir. Now, I have requested, they said they will not extend the grant. The grant expires in January of twenty-twenty-five. But they said after that date, the county can't once the audit is in. Then if if the paperwork is in place, which we fully planned on all the draw requests to be in place, then at that point in time, they will release the funds.
Good catch. So it sounds like we need to take care of this.
So we get all the paperwork done and then audits are complete, we can send send in the request for payment.
You know, I know that. I know that's Commissioner White's area, but I have property out there. I tell you, county spending that money with or without a grant was the absolute right thing to do, man. That was that was needed in the worst way. Those people were in a. Yeah, it was terrible. Yeah.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the closeout documents for this TDA, uh, uh, Texas CDVG grant. Uh, number CDV twenty-one dash oh one oh one. All right. Motion made by Commissioner White. A second, second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor?
Uh-huh.
All against? All right, we'll move down to item number six. Appoint individuals who fill the vacancy created by the recent resignation of Justice of Peace Precinct Two. Uh, this will be effective beginning January eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. And will continue into the next year election for Texas Local Government Code Section eighty-seven point zero four one. And this is, uh, Ms. Brenda Swift, JP Precinct Two has turned in her resignation. Uh, effective January the tenth. So, uh. I'm proposing that, uh. We appoint Ms. Carla Brooks in her. Uh, spot starting January the eleventh. And this Carla has worked in office for fifteen and a half years. Uh. Worked for both Brenda and Mike for a few of those years, right? Okay, so I feel like with her time in the office, um. You know, she's qualified, you know, right now she's the face of the office. So people see her when she comes in. So as far as continuation of service to the. Voters of the county, of the precinct, I think she would be a good fit.
And how long will this, uh, gonna be until the next general? When is that? That's in twenty-six is what we're saying.
When's the next gen?
November twenty-sixth. November.
But I guess the term expires January one of twenty-seven, correct?
As soon as the. And whoever is elected in that other month, they can.
Because it's a unexpired term? Okay.
And it's, yeah, until the next general.
Okay. Put their person in a regular office that would take up.
Well. There's a school scheduled for.
Through the eight. Eighty as well.
Yeah. Ever appointed as physician, do you have time to go to the grocery, attend that new judge orientation school?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a question for you. So during the last or the most recent budget cycle. The court approved a budget that. Has precinct two and three sharing one office system. What's your thought from that?
I mean, I've been so used to over the years kind of handling everything. Myself, I mean, so I mean, the help is greatly appreciated, but. I mean, uh, I think we can make it work.
You know, as before, you will. Do do it with this for two offices, so.
Yes.
You of all people would know how.
Yes.
That works, so. Figure it in.
Yes, sir.
So does the outgoing, does the outgoing JP have a recommendation for the court?
She did. She recommended this call.
She put it in here, but she had. Flat. Oh, she didn't have to take care of it.
Yeah, she was. She was all.
You can go back and help her.
See you.
She's looking at your old news.
I'm joking. Um. Commissioner White, it's your precinct. What's your thought?
She know how to smile. I saw her just dance smile. That's the that's the part very close to my area, my office, my building and whatever. But yeah, she saw Carla has been doing the way on him. Hell, that office is is I've visited from time to time and, uh. I mean, the only question that I guess I had, uh, in my mind was, uh, was there supposed to be another election between nine and twenty-six? Uh, that's, yeah. I think we couldn't choose the better person, I think, a better person.
And I think, you know, the last time I met you, you weren't here, but the court did. Recognize two things that you weren't here and we didn't know exactly the, well, that K K did, but we wanted to valid verify. So same trust but verify, verify that we're gonna have to have a correct understanding of the law and we couldn't call a special election. And. An upcoming May. And if we, you know, if we appointed somebody early, then it would offset the election. So. We've since found out that by law, we can't call a special election. So we're basically in a position for this position. And the constable's position to appoint someone until November twenty-sixth. Right? One question I have, will they, if you, just a question. So if there's two people that sign up. And they're both in the same party. And one wins, will they take effect? It won't take effect till June. Okay.
Are you willing to do what Ms. Brenda done all these years? And she's dedicated. She sure was.
Mark convinced.
No.
For those of y'all that can't see on the camera, Mike's pointing to the cell.
I would say this, that the precinct or PJP, uh, Ms. Dana Ashmore had. Nothing but good things to say about you and your abilities and your work ethics and everything to go along with that. So. That that's what I'm hanging my hat on as well. And of course, Ms. Brenda, Commissioner White as well.
Well, I know I work here and with all that being said, I think. I commend this young person. Fill that role.
All right, well, I'll go on and make the motion. I'll I'll appoint Ms. Carla Brooks. Uh, fill the vacancy created by the resignation of Justice of Peace. Justice of the Peace Precinct Two, uh, effective January eleventh, twenty-twenty-five. All right, motion made by me. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right. Thank you. You can leave now. All right, uh, item number seven. Review historic restoration of Newton County Courthouse closeout reports and take action on payment number seven in the amount of fifty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-three dollars and twelve cents. All right, they hit the final closeout report, uh, historical commission and, uh. Things in Atlanta fee, um, so we have all the documentation that's stacked right there. I want to look over on that. It's, uh, all the work that they done on restoration of the courthouse, the funds that were expended.
That that's the one that have all the pictures. I recommend. Y'all want to see a beautiful site, you need to look at some, um, do we have, look at some of those pictures. Man. Man, looking courthouse. The pictures, man, really. They did. They did. It was very professional.
So it it was the, uh. Historical commission and the, uh, their representative, uh. They approved the closeout documents and work that was done, so. It's up to the court to approve the closeout documents as well.
Take that motion.
All right, motion made by Commissioner White.
You say inside, I second it.
Second by Commissioner Benson. All in favor? All against? All right, item number eight and item number nine. It's gonna be, uh, Hurricane Laura and COVID nineteen disaster declaration. Uh, we're gonna, uh, approve those extended that disaster declaration to December eighteen, twenty-twenty-four on both of these. Uh, Hurricane Laura disaster and COVID nineteen disaster declaration. To December eighteen, twenty-twenty-four.
I like that motion. I understand it.
All right, motion is made by Commissioner Benson. Second by Commissioner White. All in favor? All against? All right.
I mean, this was actually done on the week of Christmas or weekend. So what would I need to do in the first session? If they want to get all the way through. This is. Listen. I would be maybe have a piece of two. So when is the second? Maybe, but I think act. I mean, for one, act, that's, I will have to look that I need to say. So don't worry about that. It's not, it's not.
I think it's due to extension all. Where, but you turn both of them? Check it out.
Seventeen. Okay.
My whole brother. Oh, it's not it. So it's back, back there in this, um.
One that was moving, uh, uh, discussed in the session of government. Uh, there's no action. It's the only thing that just makes the, uh, okay, that this this would see. So it's just essentially all following this.
Okay, so we don't have to take any action on item number three.
Page number four last year, but this is initial communication basically saying, hey, now we're starting on it.
I thought we had said.
We're starting, maybe we're in place. This is initial communication. So we first acknowledge this. Okay, they're starting going, hey, stay calm even day for someone or, hey, I need to fill up this questionnaire. He's trying to be a little formally, like, his circle.
Okay, good deal.
So there's just no that.
All right, so.
Item number three, we'll take no action on this noted in the minutes. And then we'll move on to item number ten. Which is approved approved extension of declaration of disaster. For flooding event that occurred on April tenth, twenty-twenty-four and was amended to enclose the event. That occurred on April twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
Make the motion that we're probably be extending the declaration of disaster as listed in item number ten.
Motion made by Commissioner Powell. I'll second it. All in favor?
Uh.
All against? All right, item number eleven. Budget amendments, I don't think we have other than what we already discussed for. Uh, KK's office. And then item number twelve is paying the bills. And then.
Okay, I like to ask you some questions.
I have some answers.
But the first two items on that ATD bill, why are they so high?
Oh, those are. Pass due announced from twenty-twenty-three. That Cherry said they were not receiving, uh. People's. And swing that somewhere. She said they weren't receiving any bills and. But just catch them up.
So close to them.
And I have copies that if you.
No, I didn't want, I didn't understand that. So.
It's her.
My second question is, what is these AC? Brick paint. I mean, they're pretty high. What's brick paint? The brick paints?
But what is that?
The way you look there.
You can follow.
We have brick fans.
That's. Is that what it was? I'm embarrassed.
Okay, when I say brick paint, I'm thinking of brick paint.
The brick can, yeah.
Basically, basically what happened, the water, water is circulating through the ground. Um, leak on the pipe, the drip pan filled up. Uh, the unit shut off with the floods. So. Unit wasn't making, you know, the water having out of a leaking pipe. That's the reason the courthouse, courtroom. And that's that's where the flooding event occurred.
With it's rippan.
I know.
Rippan should be no fifteen thousand.
Repair, although it said there's not enough space in that rip off grant.
That's all my question.
I think they had to get in there, fix pipe, they pulled. Pulled some of the grip pan and the fire to get in there to fix the leaking pipe in the unit. It's a never-ending saga. We had to move rafters and sprinkler pipe just to get those two units in and it was, it was a big ordeal. And then for them to get that unit in and up the hole and it was. Even bigger ordeal. So. We're taking us units on the ground much before it gets out.
Yeah, we want to make a charge. I'm getting dressed for life stuff.
You know, most. Not, I shouldn't say most, but a lot of buildings use us. They're using a, a. A outside unit like you used to like. It's a word here, what we, when we call them. The outside unit, it's it's for big, uh, you think in the last water, yeah. A little bit tagged enough of Matthew or you want to know, uh.
We don't call them air. Huh? Air handler?
No, the, uh, the air conditioning unit.
Oh, the unit itself. Uh, chillers.
Chillers.
Chilling.
Chillers, you know, a lot of people are using chillers on these buildings, you know. I'm sure that, sure that new complex out there will have a chiller on it, with just air pipe to the building.
Only thing about chillers, they didn't have them in nineteen-twenty.
I, that's.
So the historical commission would say, no.
Oh, well, yeah, that's, that's what they have out there.
All right, only, we only figure out how to give this building to the historical commission. Yes.
General Fund, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, eighty-three dollars and twelve cents. Road and Bridge Precinct One, three thousand, eight hundred fifty-four dollars and thirty-one cents. Road and Bridge Precinct Four, sixty-seven dollars, fifty cents. Commissioner Special Precinct One, twelve thousand, one hundred thirty-two dollars and forty-one cents. Commissioner Special Precinct Two, nine thousand, eight hundred ninety-one dollars and ninety-one cents. Commissioner Special Precinct Three, fourteen thousand, three hundred fourteen dollars and forty-one cents. Commissioner Special Precinct Four, three thousand, eight hundred four dollars and thirty-one cents. Summer West of Spose, six thousand, six hundred thirty dollars and seven cents. Newton County Library, one hundred nineteen dollars and sixty-seven cents. Historical Operating, one thousand, fifty-seven dollars and seventy-one cents. Pre-trial Diversion, two hundred nineteen dollars and nine thirty cents. Our total bond value is two hundred twenty-seven thousand, nine hundred seventy-five dollars, thirty-seven cents.
For load, my forty thousand on road and bridge was load on my side, was.
Splash.
A note on my side, I mean. By you.
That's right. That is that first.
You got a receipt for this?
Well, just, uh, just an observation, I think last time we had bill pay, precinct three, bill pay was close to the same thing that I. Good answer. So, we did do the, it make the, the court adopted the fifteen thousand dollar limit outgoing commissioners. That's been exceeded, but not by an certain amount, I guess we'll prove it today, but we got one month left, so. I don't know if it's worth mentioning, but it felt like I needed. Follow me? Sorry, I'm not out. Reason.
All right, what's, once you sign that, I need you to make a motion.
I thought it was a fifteen thousand dollar cap for that going.
Well, but it's, I think the way we wrote it was. It's not a cap, it's, if you're gonna, if you're, let's just say you decide not to run again, or you're defected in the primary, the monthly allowance is fifteen thousand dollars without more quarter proof, if I were spending more than that. Cause you know what I know, you're gonna have to, you know, decide not to run again, you may need to spend a hundred thousand dollars in some month. It's just one of those things, just kind of, general public is like, yeah, they're kind of watching what's going on, and, yeah. Yeah, I, I misunderstood, I thought it was. Different projects, you know, uh, it's a, the way it was, the way it was, I'd go back and look at the way it was stated in the minutes, but what I think the motion was, the, the item was, that if you spend more than fifteen thousand a month, you need to get it approved by court. So, I know we're approving the bills, but sometimes it can be acted back. So we don't want somebody to go out and spend two hundred thousand dollars on a road in December and not have the money to cover. And it come out of the January budget, so, that was intent, I think, not that anyone would do that. All right.
Pay the bills.
Yeah, uh, yeah.
But motion was paid, second.
All in favor?
Uh.
All against?
So, make motion in terms of what I said.
All in favor? All against? All right, thank you all. Didn't fly. There was a valve. I get it done, it's pretty good. Thank you.
Yes.
Appreciate that.
Yes.
Reversed. Again.
Right, it was helping.
We're gonna turkey in the hot sauce, like, brown, but it'd be rude to smoke more than that.
But I always say, probably, absolutely, weather and water, too, it's not, it's, I just go back, yeah. So, I'm gonna be honest with you, I don't have to, I just show up.
That's awesome.